All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. It is 7:00 PM and I call the September 23rd, 2024 School Board Meeting to Order. The Holman Board of Education and the School District of Holman acknowledge that our schools are located on the ancestral homelands of the Ho-Chonk, Sauk and Fox and Dakota peoples. We celebrate and honor these lands and their sacred significance to indigenous peoples. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
All right, Court Clerk Maggie Smith, would you please call the roll?
Chris Lau.
Here.
Lindsay Need.
Here.
Maggie Smith here. Bridget Todd Robbins.
Here.
Barb Wunsch.
Here.
Keven Zilke.
Here.
Jennifer Deek.
Here.
Kadeja Islam.
Here.
Okay, with seven of the seven board members present, I declare a quorum. I note that the agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to the local media. With this in mind, are there any changes to this agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
Chris has moved.
Second.
Maggie has second to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve the published agenda has passed. And this evening, we do not have any public participation. So we are moving on to the district administrator's report. Dr. Mueller.
Yeah, I have two items tonight. First of all, I just want to thank everyone who participated in our homecoming week this past week. Great community involvement, had a great block party, want to thank the Holman Area Foundation and our Booster Club, the participation of the parade and all the students and all the floats, it was wonderful, so, just, and thank you to all the different people that chaperoned many of our events. And then, the second item I have is, there'll be a survey that is going to be reaching our mailboxes for our residents this next week, and what it's in regards to is, we really want to gather feedback from the community for a possible referendum, and just to see what the community input would be on a potential referendum. So, if you get that survey, we ask that you take time and fill it out, because we'll be definitely looking at those results to determine if we move forward with anything. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to recognition and thank yous. Item 8.1, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Business Honor Roll recognizes outstanding businesses that support our schools. Tonight, we would like to recognize the Downings from Toppers, HSR Associates, Runde Metal Recycling, Habitat for Humanity, and Nexus Solutions. I will now ask board members to read the nominations for each of these businesses. Please come to the front of the room when your business is recognized, and thank you for all you do for our schools. So to start off, we have the Downings from Toppers.
Denise and Phil Downing, owners of the local Toppers Pizza, have been outstanding supporters of the School District of Holman. For over thirteen years, they have actively engaged with grade school students, conducted pizza demonstrations, and making pizzas with every 4K student, a memorable experience for many. Whether it's providing large pizza orders at discounted prices for parent-teacher conferences, events, or other activities, or offering coupons to students in need, the Downings consistently show their generosity. Their support extends beyond their business with personal contributions in the form of checks to various school programs and activities. Their dedication has made them invaluable assets to the Holman Booster Club, where their involvement is deeply appreciated. The Downings' unwavering commitment to the community, schools, and willingness to support and help wherever needed exemplify their exceptional character. Their consistent support has had a significant and positive impact on students, staff, and the broader school district community. Thank you.
(applause)
Thank you.
(inaudible)
Do I make you coin?
No.
HSR has been an exceptional partner for the School District of Holman, playing a crucial role in our past and ongoing referendum projects. The team at HSR is not only incredibly skilled, but also trustworthy, consistently delivering stunning designs and high-quality completed projects. From the initial beautiful renderings to the final touches, we have full confidence in HSR's ability to develop and execute extraordinary designs. Their dedication and attention to detail have ensured that our projects meet the highest standards of excellence. HSR has been with us every step of the way, providing invaluable support and expertise throughout the entire process. Their commitment to our vision and goals has made them an indispensable partner. The exceptional work and collaboration from HSR has significantly contributed to the success of our projects. We are grateful for their continued partnership and look forward to many more successful ventures together in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Runde Metal Recycling.
Runde Metal Recycling has been an invaluable partner to the School District of Holman, offering essential support for our projects. They regularly provide dumpsters, streamlining waste management for the schools. Their services were particularly vital during the recent bleacher removal project at Holman High School, where their contribution was key to its success. Runde Metal Recycling has also shown strong support for our athletics program by sponsoring team transportation and contributing to our 18 Holes for Holman. Their commitment extends beyond business, reflecting a genuine investment in our community's well-being and success. We deeply appreciate their consistent support and positive impact they have on our students, staff, and school programs. Runde Metal Recycling's partnership is a testament to the power of community collaboration. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up, we have Habitat for Humanity.
Habitat for Humanity has been an invaluable partner to the School District of Holman during our construction projects. Their team played a crucial role in the renovation of two Holman schools by salvaging usable materials. Dedicated workers spent time removing items such as cabinets and other materials, ensuring these resources were kept out of the landfill. Through their efforts, Habitat for Humanity aims to repurpose these materials for use in other buildings and homes, promoting sustainability and resourcefulness. In addition to their construction support, Habitat for Humanity has served as a vital partner for our students through their youth partnerships, offering hands-on learning experiences in construction. They've also engaged with our district leadership team and school board in hosting a Team Build Day. Their partnership exemplifies the positive impact that collaboration had both on the community and the environment. Thank you to Habitat for Humanity.
Over the past year and beyond, Nexus Solutions has been an instrumental partner for the School District of Holman, significantly aiding our referendum projects. Their expertise has been invaluable from the initial campaign and planning stages through post-referendum execution and ongoing meetings. Nexus staff have consistently demonstrated exceptional support and dedication, proving themselves to be a tremendous resource at every step. Their commitment and excellent service has been key to our successes, making them an indispensable ally. With their assistance, we've been able to effectively plan, execute, and manage various projects, ensuring that our students and schools receive the best possible resources and facilities. Nexus Solutions has shown unwavering support and a deep understanding of our needs, which has greatly contributed to the betterment of our educational environment. We're proud to honor Nexus Solutions as a 2024 WASBee Business Honor Roll Partner, recognizing their outstanding contributions and the positive impact they've had on our schools and students.
(applause)
This is a night I enjoy.
One day I don't work, you shoot.
Your picture? No.
Me either.
It's your school board award, so, that's...
I was gonna say, I was gonna stand in the front.
Yeah. I know, Michelle, we always end up in the front, don't we? We always end up in the front, don't we?
Yeah, there we go. Everybody's head. Yeah, hold them up. Open them up. Perfect. Okay, I can see everybody. Can everybody see me? All right, one, two, and three. More, one, two, three. Thank you, and then can I just get all five of you? Okay, ready? One, two, three. More, one, two, three. Thank you. (applause)
Okay, and then Dr. Mueller will continue with the rest of tonight's recognition and thank yous.
Yeah, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank our custodians and maintenance staff. It is National Custodians Day on October 2nd. They are definitely our unsung heroes that walk the halls and make sure they're clean and safe for our students, day in and day out, and that, so that they can, students can really concentrate on learning. And also would like to not only thank them, but also their leaders, Ben Gapa and Chad Brandell, for all their hours that they put in each and every day. And then, let's see, October 6th through the 12th is Wisconsin School Board Week, so that's when we take the opportunity to celebrate all of you sitting up at the table here, all of our school board members. We know that this job is not an easy one, and there's many hours of time that you put in behind the scenes that no one knows about, and really, you, you know, do all this for our students and for our community, and we're so thankful to have dedicated folks like yourselves that take on challenges day in and day out to, for the betterment of our students. So we definitely appreciate your leadership in, in all that you do in serving on our school board. So just thank you to, you know, well, we have our student rep, Keven, and Maggie Smith, and Kadeja, Chris, Jennifer, Lindsay, Bridget, and Barb, so thank you very much for all you do. And lastly, we would like to thank Moxie, Saloon, and Spav. They donated some school supplies and it... Salon, sorry. So, sorry. Excuse me. For your school supplies. It really helps the needs of our students, especially after having the school year started, and hopefully we can bleep that out. Okay.
All right. Moving on to reports and discussion. For items 9.1 and 9.2, academic and career planning school counselor Lindsay Sype will present the reports on advanced placement results, early college credit program, Start College Now, and the Transcended and Dual Credit Programs. These items are for report only and will not appear on the consent agenda.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I'm Lindsay Sype, I'm one of the counselors at the high school, and I also coordinate the AP program and some of the dual credit programs. So, I'm just gonna kind of go through advanced placement first to give an update, and then move on to Start College Now and Early College Credit. Okay, so advanced placement, we offer kind of an abundance of advanced placement courses at the high school, and we'll talk about each of those. So, the reason why some students may choose to take advanced placement courses is, it can save students time and money if they choose to go on to a four-year university or college. It will help students kind of stand out in that application process as they apply to universities and colleges. Given, depending on the score that the student receives on the AP exam, they could have the ability to earn college credit. The college credit determination is based off universities, and so it's not the same across the board, but students can earn anywhere from, from three to, I've seen, eight credits, things like that, for a high score on an AP exam. And it also gives students that academic rigor during their high school time by taking a college-level class while they're at the high school. So, this is based off the data from last year, so in 2023, 2024, these are the courses that we offered within AP. So you can see English Language and Composition, English Literature and Composition, Computer Science Principles, AP US History, Calculus AB, Statistics, Chemistry, Computer Science A, Biology, Calculus BC, and then AP Government as well. So again, at the bottom, it says students earning a score of three or greater on the AP exam are likely to receive college credit. So this is the participation trend, so each year, just kind of tracking how many students we have taking these AP courses and the exams. So last year, we had 178 students within AP courses, and then we issued 224 AP exams during that first two weeks of May across the 11 courses. So, students have the option, they are not required to take the exam, so some students choose not to, but I would say the majority of kids who are registered for AP courses choose to take the exam. Here's a little bit of a summary as to how students scored. So again, 178 students participated, we issued 224 exams, 142 of our students scored a three or higher, so a total of 79.78%, which is phenomenal, which is awesome to So who is participating in these courses? This is just kind of a breakdown of some demographics and things as to who's taking the courses. So, I would say probably, this is my sixth year, in the last few years, maybe two, three, we've had more freshmen come in to take an AP course. So you can see, we did have six ninth-grade students take AP exams last year, but the majority and the bulk is within the senior class. Sophomores can take AP US History, that's kind of our, I guess, traditional path, first AP course that students can take. So, we always have a big section of AP US History, but again, the majority are seniors. And this is some race and ethnicity back, you know, kind of discussion as to who is taking the AP courses across the board. I know in the past, we've always had that conversation of, oh, what's the demographics of students that are taking these courses? So Kim Edwards and I dug a little bit this time to just get a little bit of a breakdown to see. And then males versus females, so obviously larger, 104 females versus 70 males and four others participating in the courses. And then, the college board allows, so it's, this year, it's gonna be $99 per exam. Last year, it was 98. Students who qualify for free and reduced lunch get a break in the fee for the exam, so it's half price for students that qualify for reduced, and then free for students who qualify for free lunch. So here's a breakdown as to how many students kind of qualified in that fee reduction, so 25 students. And then here's a breakdown of performance based off of course, so the percentage of students earning a three or greater based off the subject area. So you can see, I mean, we have quite a few subjects where 100% of the students earned a three or higher, so earned those college credits. I feel like every year, Kim and I are shocked when we look at these, especially calc, like if you just think that 100% of our BC students are getting a three or higher, and many of them are getting fives, which is crazy. So, really, really strong students and strong testing skills. Same with our computer science and our English Literature and Composition, so this is a breakdown of that. Questions on AP?
All right, any questions?
I guess just what came to my mind as you were going through that was the students that choose not to take it, is, do you know the reasoning behind that, and are you certain that it's not because they can't afford the fee to take it?
Yeah, so I would say the majority of students feel they won't do well. And so I always had that conversation of, it's a really good experience, so even if you just take it as, I'll do my best, and I kind of have nothing to lose, but the majority, I would say, would be like, this class was harder than I anticipated, or I thought I could do well, and at this point, I just want to get, like, pass the class. I need to focus on passing the class and not taking the exam. Yeah. And there's not that many kids who choose not to take the exam. And really with, in collaboration with Mr. Sackett and the fee reduction through college board, I would say the fee for the exam is never the issue. Yeah.
Are there, like, enrollment requirements for that? I saw a couple of the classes, psychology and something else, only had one person took the test.
Yeah, so, the reason for psychology is, we offer Gen Psych, and so we'll kind of talk about that with Transcended, but Gen Psych is a 20-code Transcended class with Western, so it really transfers many places. So the student that took Gen Psych was hoping to go to school on the East Coast, and so was really thinking that they wouldn't accept a Transcended credit course, and so wanted to take that AP exam just to have that to fall back on.
But there aren't any, like, minimum require, number of students to enroll in a class?
No, no, so actually, in this coming year, we have one student who's taking four exams of courses that we don't offer. So any student can come in and say, you know, I feel really strongly in, you know, whatever it might be. I can't even think of an example, Modern History, can I please take the Modern History exam? Or sometimes, we don't offer both sections of calc, just due to enrollment, so they might say, I really want to take BC, even though I'm enrolled in AB, I think I can study on my own, and I can get a good score in that. Yeah. So we can have one student test for a section if we wanted to. Yeah, and in the past...
Oh, I guess that's, yeah, that's my, there's not a correlation between, you can take the test without actually sitting through the class?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely, yeah. And in the past, I would say, there's always, like, one to three students that pick a class that they want to take the exam, but they haven't taken the class.
So the freshmen that are coming in and taking an AP course right away, are those, because you also made mention that, like, AP US History is the first...
Yeah.
Traditionally, the first offered at the sophomore year, are these students generally accelerated from middle school, and then they've taken the classes that they need to qualify for these? And then, I mean, if you can share, do you know what categories those are in?
So, last year, we had, I think they were in language, so they both, I think, took Lit and Lang. Yeah. We did have one student who came in and took Calculus and took a Language as well in previous years. So they're students who have worked with Gifted and Talented and Susan Stein at the middle school, and then have come into the high school at a higher level, or have tested high. Yeah.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you for including the demographic breakdown, I know that has come up when this has come up before the board in the past.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to Early College Credit, Start College Now, Transcended Credit, excuse me, and Dual Credit. So, okay, so the Early College Credit and Start College Now process, this is in collaboration, Start College Now is through Western, and Early College Credit is with UWL and Viturbo. And so, we offer the, this opportunity for particularly juniors and seniors at the high school to students who wish to participate. So we have an application process. October 1st is for the spring semester, and March 1st is for the fall semester. And so, students who are interested would gather those application materials, they're coming in hot right now for spring semester for the October 1st deadline. Students typically meet with their counselors and have kind of that conversation that they would like to expand learning outside of our walls, and if it fits into the student's career plan, they've exceeded their options at the high school, and so maybe they have taken our Anatomy and Physiology and they liked it, and they would like to now take a college-level Anatomy and Physiology, then they could go to Western to take that course. If they meet the college and university requirements and prerequisites, then they fill out that application. They submit the application to myself, Mr. Sackett and I go through all of the applications, and then we pass the applications on to either UWL, Viturbo, or Western to their admissions, and then, I always say, like, kind of pass the ball to them, and then their admissions department kind of takes over to communicate with students. Another part of this is, we started doing a parent-student contract meeting, just to make sure that parents were kind of aware and on board. I feel like when we first started that, there were some parents that thought, oh my gosh, I didn't know they're leaving the high school to go to UWL to take a class, so just making sure families are aware of that piece, too. So for the fall, right now, we have 17 credits worth at UWL, no students are taking classes at Viturbo, and then 40 credits at Western. Some of the courses that students typically take, CNA is a big one. We have a ton of students that take CNA at Western. Intro to Sociology is another one that transfers to a lot of schools, and so many students take that. Intro to Ethics, and then we have a student that's taking calc, some high computer science courses at UWL this semester, and then Spring 2025, I think I must present later in past years, because I had that data, but kids, like I said, are bringing in applications every day for that October 1st deadline. So who is participating currently in the program? So we have five males, 11 females, and then the race/ethnicity breakdown right now, and this is for Start College Now and Early College Credit. So here is a five-year trend for credits earned. So you can see that, I would say that the more credits we offer in-house, the less students are going to UWL and to Western to take classes. So instead of coming to my office and saying, hey, I want to take any class, I just want to try a college class, they're able to get that experience and that rigor through our dual credit in our building, which is kind of, I always say, the comfort of our building, but also having this increased rigor by having a college course. So our numbers have dropped a little bit, but I don't see that as a bad thing, I see that as kids instead are staying in our building to get that college credit. So, a big thing for Start College Now and Early College Credit is, we pay for the tuition at a discounted rate, so it's free for families, which is a huge benefit. And this is a little bit of the breakdown as to just cost. So, the 17 credits will cost the School District of Holman 1,785. If students were to take that outside of the School District of Holman as, you know, a traditional student, you're looking at $7,276. So, and then the 40 credits at Western, 6,400, so a huge savings for families. So, in regards to the in-house college credit, Transcended Credit Courses is a really big thing, and that's in collaboration with Western Technical College. So in order to offer Transcended Credit, a teacher has to meet the requirements and qualifications of Western to be an instructor at their college, and once approved, the Transcended Credit teachers, we attend a seminar every year that's in collaboration with our mentors that are at Western, so the instructors that teach the courses at Western and us, we collaborate before school starts, and then throughout the school year as well. So these are our Transcended Credit Courses that we offer right now at the high school. So you can see, it's across many different areas, so we have a lot in business, we have a lot in our tech ed department, we have some education courses, and then general psychology, like I had mentioned to Chris before, is a really big class that a lot of students take, because it's really transferable to many universities and colleges. So the financial impact for Transcended Credit, again, this is free for students, so it's our staff members that are teaching these courses, and then they're earning Western technical credits for free. So we had 758 students earn Transcended Credit last year, and the total... and the total credits was two thousand eight hundred and fifteen with a cost savings of four hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. So it was free to the district and free to the students, but students walk away with a Western transcript. The other in-house college credit is Dual Credit. So this is different in the sense that these are our teachers teaching these college courses, but students are paying for these courses, so they're choosing to pay for the Dual Credit. If you are in these courses, you don't have to take them for Dual Credit. You will still earn the high school credit, but you can choose to pay for Dual Credit. So last year, we collaborated with Green Bay and we collaborated for French four and then we also collaborated for Spanish. So in the World Language Department, students could actually earn eleven retroactive credits if they earned a B or better in French two oh two or Spanish two oh two with a total of fourteen credits. And then they could earn five point five retroactive credits if they earned a B.C. or C. in French or Spanish. So this is the breakdown of how many students participated in this. So French two oh two was in the fall semester and Spanish two oh two. So we had sixteen students participate in Spanish and eight students in French. And then Spanish two twenty-two in the spring semester was nineteen students and then French two twenty-two were ten students. And this again was in collaboration with UW-Green Bay. So last year, we added UW-Oshkosh for our Adventure Education and Outdoor Recreation Course with Jared Banknesky. And then, and we had a handful of students participate in that. I think we had about eight students participate in that in our fourth term. We will continue that this year. And then this year, we added a collaboration with UW-River Falls, which has been fantastic. And we are offering English one hundred, Math two twenty-five, which is actually Math two twenty-five slash A.P. Stats. So students have the option to take the A.P. Stats exam or they can take it for Dual Credit. They could do it for both if you had a student who thought, you know, I'm going to go to school on the East Coast or something like that and I want to have an A.P. score instead. And then also Engineering Design will be in second semester, will offer Dual Credit. And then instead of Green Bay, for Spanish this year, we're going to collaborate with UW-Lacrosse. So we will continue our relationship with UW-Green Bay for French for two oh two, but we will offer Spanish for Dual Credit with UW-Lacrosse. And the cost per credit differs a little bit per university, as you can see. So hundred and five for UW-Oshkosh, hundred and ten for River Falls, and then a hundred and fifteen for UW-Lacrosse. One thing, UW-Green Bay does offer scholarships for students who need some financial assistance. And UW-River Falls offers a discount for students with free and reduced lunch, so for those two universities. Questions?
All right, any questions?
I just had one question about like the early college credits, especially the CNA. Is there a limit on how many students can get into that class?
So the CNA, they offer a lot of sections and kind of a whole range of schedules at Western, but we do have students who it's full, yeah, yeah. And it really depends on how many students at Western are taking the course. And then sometimes it's like, oh, the only option would be in Toma or the only option would be in Black River or something like that.
You, I know you talked about approving like all the applications. Do you do that as like a whole or as they come in?
No, so Mr. Sackett and I, we take all the applications and we meet for a big chunk of time and go through every single one.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
What would be some reasons that you would deny someone?
If they're not successful in our building.
Okay.
That's really the big one. Or if for some reason, like let's say a student signs up to take Anatomy and Physiology and they haven't taken our Anatomy and Physiology first, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Did you see the majority of people then that move on to the admissions at the universities get accepted?
Yes, yeah.
And help me understand that, and I guess I'm not sure about how some courses are offered at some universities, but not like you said, oh, this one's going to be UW-Lacrosse now, not Green Bay. How come you can't do it at both? How does that work?
So we chose to take UW-Lacrosse because a lot of our students go on to U.W.L. And if the way that U.W.L.'s World Language Department taught is if students came in with their Green Bay credit, they would still make the student take a placement exam and then they would place those students based off the placement exam. So if we collaborate with U.W.L. for Dual Credit and then a student takes Dual Credit at the high school and then they go on and they attend U.W.L. as a first year, they would not have to take that placement exam. They would automatically be enrolled in the next course. Okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Moving on to item nine point three, Executive Director of Instructional Services Kim Edwards will present the Field Experience Contract for UW-O'Clare. This item will appear on the October fourteenth consent agenda.
Good evening. I have a Field Experience Contract from the University of Wisconsin-O'Clare for your consideration tonight. This would allow us to continue our partnership with them in order to place clinical students and student teachers with us. If approved, this would continue our partnership through twenty of twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-nine. Any questions on that?
No, no questions, thank you. All right, moving on to item nine point four, Holman High School Activities Director Jason Luloff will present the WIAA Co-Curricular Renewal Agreement for Girls and Boys Swimming and Diving. This item will also appear on the October fourteenth consent agenda.
Hello, here to present the two co-ops that we are in charge of. I figured I would do them both at the same time. Girl swimming is due soon, boy swimming isn't due for a while, but figured I could lump the conversations. Our boys swimming co-op would be between Holman, Onalaska Aquinas, Onalaska Luther, and then one new addition in G.E.T. So that particular co-op, the boys' co-op, would be the existing schools we had before plus G.E.T. G.E.T. has one swimmer that would like to join it. If you follow swimming at all in the area, there are very few pools in the area that can sustain a swimming program. So in this particular area, many of the schools are lumped together. We're kind of the north co-op and then there's more of the southeast co-op, which is why G.E.T. is asking to join our co-op. On the girls' end, it would be a renewal of the existing co-op between Holman, Aquinas, Onalaska, and G.E.T. And just as a quick reminder, Holman is the whole school, so Holman fronts all of the hiring of the coaches, the staffing, the tracking of all the bills and then distributes to each of the schools according on a per athlete basis. So if there's ten athletes and you had five of them, half of the bill would go to the school of five athletes and they're all handled the same way. So any questions for me on the renewal of the boys' and girls' swimming co-ops? These are every two-year renewals.
All right, any questions?
Just a general one, I guess, about co-ops, is there a limit to the number of schools that can be in a co-op?
No, if you ever look at like gymnastics and hockey co-ops, you can see really long names. It's more about opportunities that you can provide. So there's a number of reasons why co-ops can exist, it's number of students. So in our case, I would say that it's our girls' team is in the twenties with all those schools and our boys' team is in under ten with all those schools. So in our case, it's more of a numbers and resource. This area doesn't have enough pools to sustain teams and I would even argue that partly the lack of interest is because these pools don't exist in schools and the time for kids to be able to practice is not super ideal. I think all that kind of plays into a factor as to why a student may or may not participate in something, but as far as the WIA is concerned, they look at a number of things such as numbers, resources, a three-year running average of interest. So we have to provide numbers from three years ago to our projected numbers for the next two years and they look at all that information before they approve it.
So where do they practice? What pools?
We go to the YMCA's. We sort of have a partnership with the YMCA's in our ability to have surround care over here. It's just that the pools are, the pools at the Y's are not really designed for lane swimming as well as, or more for like programming for the Y. So with that, they have, they can't necessarily host swimming teams and then in addition to that, there's multiple swimming clubs such as the Wave that practice at those facilities. So it's not, it's not super ideal for the timeframe. We're generally practicing pretty late at night.
All right, any other questions? All right, thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background materials on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. When any board member like to pull an item out of the consent agenda to be discussed and/or voted on separately, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided. Motion by Maggie.
I'll second it.
Second by Chris. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, we'll be moving on to the board debrief. I will call upon board members and ask you to present any comments or committee reports you have. And tonight, we'll start with Chris.
We don't have anything from policy this month. As we presented our, from our previous meeting, in our last meeting, we don't have one next until early October. And just, I guess, the one thing from tonight's meeting is it's always great to see just the, the options that are provided to our students at a significant or free charge. I'm looking forward to hopefully having my kids take part in that. So it's just awesome when we hear about that as a board and from the community. That's all.
All right, thank you, Lindsay.
Yeah, I would second that, definitely great opportunities. And again, congrats to everyone that was honored tonight, all the businesses, really appreciate everything that they do for us.
Maggie?
I'll echo that for the, the business honor roll recipients. Add a thank you to custodians and maintenance staff. And then I'll also just say thank you to all my fellow board members. I know you all have very full lives outside of this table and I think we have a really great group of leaders. I'm proud to work with you all.
Okay, Bridgette.
I did read that Dave Sherdin donated a car to the high school automotive program. So I think that's really awesome and I'm excited for all those kids in that program. And then I was excited to see that the student section received the Neptune Game Time Student Section Week Two Contest Winner. And I just think that's amazing because, I mean, I read a lot of research about the, you know, how, how students participating in school and extracurricular activities is really declining and I don't see that here and I think that's amazing. And just seeing all the, the really cool homecoming activities and just the school spirit just really, I just think says a lot for our district. So I just want to thank everyone for that.
All right, thank you. Barb?
Tonight was our first finance committee meeting of the year. It's always our big one as far as the accountant presented our twenty-three, twenty-four audit summary. And so that was reviewed. In the future, we'll be discussing things over the year such as the survey going out as previously discussed by Dr. Mueller in regards to a possible referendum.
All right, thank you, Kiven.
I just hope that everyone had a good month, new year this past weekend. And then I want to talk about homecoming week, the activities. We had dress-up days, we had lunch bingo and we had the parade and that's all, or at least mostly due part to the student council, which is like applaud for them. And then I want to talk about the football game and give a thanks to our choir, our band, the alumni award winner, our cheer team, our dance team, and then also the energy at the game. It was really nice. It was also really packed. I could see people just like, it was all full in our section and there's people just along the fences. It's so great to see the like, our whole community is just together. And then also the dance this weekend, I hope everyone had a great time because people have talked to, they said that they were so tired from dancing that they woke up and they felt like they had abs. But that's it for me.
All right, thank you. Karisha?
Yeah, I just, I will agree with all of the folks up here. Thank you to our community members for the ways you support the school district. Thank you to our custodians and maintenance staff. Thank you to the board. And just a note that early October is next week. When you said our next meeting for the Policy Committee is early October, that's-
Oh, it's like two weeks away.
All right, that's all I have.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to, once again, I'd like to thank all the outstanding businesses we recognized this evening and thank them for all they do for our schools. I also had the pleasure of joining kindergarteners from Viking Elementary as well as some Ag students from the high school up at the apple orchard for apple picking back on September tenth. There was a ton of excitement with the kids up there and it was great to hear the stories from some of the high school kids who actually planted that orchard when they were in elementary school and now they came back to help support the kindergarteners pick the apples that day. Dave Shufflebine was up there. He, he taught us the proper way to pick an apple. So you don't pull the apple, you twist it and lift it and then the apple comes off in case anybody, you should, you should try it, it actually works. So no, that was, that was a lot of fun that day. I also want to recognize our custodians for the upcoming National Custodians Day, which is soon approaching, and just express my appreciation because I know they work tirelessly to clean our schools and keep things safe and welcoming for our students and staff. And then lastly, I also want to, with the Wisconsin School Board week coming up, I want to take a moment to recognize the school board members that I serve with here for their dedication and service to our district and community. It's a true honor to sit on a board who is fully committed to ensuring a high-quality education for our students, supporting our staff and listening to our community. So thank you all for your hard work, leadership, and passion for making a positive impact on our schools. And I know, I know from experience that it can be really difficult to balance work life, home life, board life and everything. So I guess if anybody sees a board member in the next few weeks, please take the time to thank them for their service because it can be a lot to juggle sometimes, so. And that's all I have. Moving on to item eleven point three. The board has been provided with notes from the April eighth D.E.I. committee meeting, so please take a look at those. Then item eleven point four, for our upcoming board meeting schedule, we have a policy committee meeting on October second at five P.M. On October fourteenth, we have a D.E.I. committee meeting at five P.M., followed by a board meeting at seven P.M. And then on October twenty-eighth, that's the evening, we have our budget hearing at six P.M., followed by an annual meeting, followed by our regular board meeting. So is there any other business that needs to come to the, come before the board at this time? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Chris has moved.
Second.
Barb has second to adjourn the meeting at seven forty-eight P.M. Motion carried. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.